Okay, good evening and welcome to the November 2nd, 2017 addition of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is a specific continuation from our 7:20 PM application on October 19th from Longwood, excuse me, Penrose Properties LLC requesting 40B comprehensive permits for property known as Mary D. Stone School located at 10 Church Street, MAP 49, Parcel 116, and property known as Julia Bancroft School located at 3 Vinyl Street, MAP 10, Parcel 68. Do I have a motion open in the hearing?
Motion open.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Sir, if you approach the lectern, bring us up to speed on where we are in this project and we'll begin our discussion.
Yes, thank you very much. We appreciate you bringing us back here for this and allowing us to continue to talk with you about the two proposals of the two schools. So, we were just here a couple of weeks ago, but I think the three things, well, the two things to follow up with on the board, the board asked was to do a, see if you could put together a traffic survey or study for Mary D. Stone. And so, we've completed that and we were able to get that and got that in a couple of days ago and were able to send that to Matt and I believe he's shared that with you as a board. And then, the second thing was actually, we were waiting for you and we got it, was the peer review, which just came in today, which is great. And our team has actually had a chance to look at it and we're happy to talk and respond about it. So, I think those were the two main follow-up items. The third thing was, I also had an opportunity to go meet with one of the abutters. I wanted to, before this meeting, since you're coming back out, to go over and meet with one of the abutters that had expressed concerns about the wall on this property related to safety, concerns about possible light and fencing, and we did, we're able to do that as well. So, those are the three main follow-up things we had from last week. And we can start with any of those in any order, obviously, that you wish.
Whichever order you prefer.
Sure. Well, we can start with the traffic survey, if you guys have that in front of you. My, I'm gonna quickly get beyond my pay grade with this, so, and then I'm gonna, but I have an expert, Chelsea is here. Let me, I shouldn't introduce my team, I apologize. So, here with us today, you met before, we're gonna skip the first one here. That's Adam Yathers, you met last time, the architect. Chelsea Christensen, who's our civil engineer. And the new person here tonight is Paul Haverdy, he's our attorney that's representing us and he can talk a little bit more about the decision and how that works. And that's why he's here tonight, so, for the future.
Okay.
So, having said that, I think the main thing is, on the traffic survey, if you wanna look at page two, and the thing I would draw your attention to, it's the table two, it's the trip generation estimate. And what little I do know about the traffic surveys is what's important is the peak hours. That's really what people are most concerned about. So, if you look at sort of four lines down in the white, you see the weekday morning peak. What the traffic survey did, and we just had a short time to do this, so, we were able to put some stuff together. Obviously, if the board would like to see more, we're happy to do that, but in the short, I guess, two weeks or so that we had to do this, they were able to do this survey. And what we wanna do is compare the use of the senior housing that we have here with two other uses. Obviously, the elementary school, which was there before, that's really the biggest, the best comp, because you're comparing what was there now with what's gonna be going in. And then, you know, what else could possibly go in there? Office is a sort of a third category of potential uses that could be there. So, we thought it would be worthwhile for the board to see what the use of the, our proposal be related to what the alternative uses could be. And as you can see from this, the senior housing is a much less intensive use, particularly at the weekday morning peak hours. You can see that there's 117 cars that would be coming and entering the building at that time compared to 22 for senior and 71 for office. So, it's a pretty stark comparison. There's, in the evening, it's equally different, but not quite as dramatic when you have 39, you'd have 39 cars leaving at the elementary school, 20 from the senior, so it's almost double the impact and obviously 68 from the office. So, given that, you know, what we had said before was our gut reaction, and I think it's proved out by the study, is that, you know, senior housing is a much less intensive use with respect to traffic than alternative uses could be for the site, just given the senior population that would be living there.
Okay. I'm just gonna try to let the board do one thing at a time, if you don't mind?
Absolutely, no, that's fine. And if you have more questions, I'm gonna quickly bring Chelsea up, 'cause you're gonna be, quickly be on me.
Okay, well, let me determine, do we have any questions regarding the traffic study?
I do not.
Mr. Maron?
No, no.
Okay, so, I think we're satisfied with that information.
Okay.
If you'd like to move on to the next topic.
Sure. So, the peer review is the next one, and we literally got it this afternoon, about, I think, 2:40 it came in. Luckily, though, both my architect and I have an engineer were able to review it this afternoon. Hopefully, they weren't reviewing in the car on the way over, or I'm hoping that they pulled over to review it, for all of our safety. But they did have a chance to look at it, and there's really nothing in there that's material from our perspective. It's mostly kinda clerical. So, obviously, so there's nothing in there that we're opposed to or object to of the comments that were given. They're all things we're comfortable handling and can address. And, but if there's anything in, specific that people wanna go through, we're happy to go through them and answer any questions you have about them. But as I said, most of them were kinda clerical. I think there was one call to do some additional testing of a test pit, and Chelsea said that's absolutely fine, we can accommodate that.
I think I'd just like to direct your attention to the general engineering comments, page three or four.
Actually, bear with me one second, I actually didn't bring a copy up.
Okay. It's items 10 through 14.
Uh, yes, I've got them, yep.
They just talked about some certain changes here, so, like, the north end of the building, the building face and the door are proposed or are immediately adjacent to the access of the driveway curb line.
Yes.
Door must not swing into the access driveway and there needs to be a sidewalk. There are also really, I think, kinda, that whole section tends to revolve around safe egress and entrance and egress from the apartment area, I think, right?
Correct.
So...
Do I, can I have my architect address that, if that's helpful to you?
I'm sorry?
Do you wanna have my architect address what they were...
Yes, could you please?
Sure.
Let me see that.
Adam, do you mind?
Good evening, my name is Adam Yathers, I'm a civil engineer. Yeah, I think they even, in the peer review study, mentions later on in the study that they recognize that these drawings are conceptual schematic in nature and not construction plans. So, this, among other things, are small items that we recognize need to be addressed. There will be a sidewalk there to keep people egressing from that stairwell and the building a safe distance away from any cars coming by and keeping those two separate.
Okay. Can you address number 12 for us, please? The plans proposed, look for the retaining wall?
Retaining wall, my 12 says, I'm in the right one. Bear with me one moment here. Anyone, Mary D. Stone?
Mary D. Stone, yes, Mary D.
Yeah, this is all for the Mary D.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I think I'll have Chelsea address that, it's more of a...
Okay, yeah, that's fine, whoever needs to do it.
Hey, Chelsea Christensen from Niche Engineering, civil engineer. The comment is to address the water flowing from the town hall onto the stone property. We are aware that the wall will be blocking stormwater flows and we are, we'll be addressing that with additional catch basins or whatever is needed to redirect the water from that area.
And who would be prepared to talk about the electrical transformer pad and trash enclosures?
I can address that, I think, basically, that's a simple minor coordination issue between the drawings. As we were developing this package, things were changing at a pretty quick pace, so, it's, both the trash enclosure and the electrical transformer are in the same general area, but I think two got transposed and just haven't been coordinated, but there's room for both in both, in that location.
Sure.
And it just needs to be coordinated between the drawings of various disciplines.
Okay. And I think just number 14, if somebody wants to address that also, the concrete retaining wall, proposed on the west side?
Okay.
Yes, we are proposing an additional retaining wall closer to our new driveway. We, it will be coordinated with the existing retaining wall. We haven't consulted the structural and geotechnical engineers about this yet, but that's part of the further design process, that we will make sure that we are not affecting the existing wall.
Right, okay. Just given the points that we addressed now, Mr. Cuss, do you have any questions regarding those items?
No. Well, if they're willing to address all these issues, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Mr. Chacolo?
Do we wanna get into just how they're gonna be addressed, or is that to come?
No, I mean, what I mean, you've prepared the best, right?
I'm looking at number 13.
Oh, my God.
The present location. The trash receptacles being manually moved.
I'm sorry, did you repeat the question?
Number 13, where it states that it's the, it will require presently that the trash receptacles will be manually moved from the enclosure so that a truck can empty the receptacles.
Yes, so that's typically what we do, so there'll be trash inside the building, the residents will deposit it there on trash day, our management, maintenance folks will take the barrels out to the curb where it can be collected by the trash company and then they'll return them.
What kind of dumpsters will these be?
I'm sorry?
What kind of dumpsters will these be? I'm assuming for a building like that, they're gonna be pretty large, so to manually move them would be extremely difficult, especially in the wintertime.
Our, Penrose's operations folks have told us that the dumpsters they typically use are on the order of five-yard dumpsters.
That's still gonna be tough to move in the wintertime.
Well, we have a accessible route from the trash room that would be plowed and a direct access from the trash room to the dumpster location that would be clear of snow. I'm not sure which...
Not comfortable with that.
Okay. Do you wanna address the issues, all the concerns you have?
They are going to be moving a pad, because as it states here, they're both on the same pad. A transformer pad is in the same location where you propose the dumpster pad to be.
So, that, I believe...
I'm looking at number 13.
So, yes, I think, I think that was one of the issues where there was a discrepancy between the drawings. That'll be fixed. Do you wanna say which one's gonna be where, though? Do we have a sense of the pad and transformation pad?
I mean, they'll both, they'll both be generally in the same area. One will be next to the other. Not having the plans right in front of me, I can't speak to which one will be east or west.
There will be a distinction made so that they're not, the plan does not show them on the same pad.
Correct.
Through the chair, if I may, I just wanna remind the board that these, this peer review just came in late this afternoon, so, to get specific on how they're gonna address the issues, maybe a little difficult when they haven't had an opportunity to look at it that far.
That's all for now.
Okay, Mr. Maron?
No questions, Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Roach?
No.
Ms. Blaze?
No.
Okay. So, I noticed that we have some, let's address, I think the last one here is the water district report?
Yeah.
You wanna talk about that first, then we'll bring it open to the abutters?
Do you wanna talk about the water, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
'Cause we have two peer review letters.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, we need to go through the second peer review letter as well, I apologize. All right, so, that was the first one, and then for, yes, for the JB. So, we have that one comment and the general engineering comments, again, I'd like to address, and this is for the Julia Bancroft proposal, and that's page three or four, number 10. The entrance of the Oxford Street North driveway needs to be shifted to the south, perhaps seven to 10 feet, to avoid the driveway radius from the encroaching in front of the building property to lessen the potential impact to sightlines caused by the row of shrubs along the abutters frontage when drivers are looking north and to avoid having to move the existing utility pole and guy pole.
So, this was addressing the driveway on Oxford Street?
Yes.
Yes, we've, we have that utility pole located on the survey and are aware that we need to work around it.
Okay. Any comments on that issue, Mr. Cuss?
No, you have no issues following up on all these corrections that they asked?
No, we'll...
You're gonna address them all?
Make sure that we're able to move the vehicles in and out without impacting it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Just to give you a bigger con, one of the things we had in it last time is the larger picture of the process of what we're, sort of the next steps, sort of after this, as we move through the zoning with you. So, as, as we've mentioned, these rooms, these drawings are very preliminary. The path for this, for the development is to work with you to secure zoning. That gives us an opportunity to apply for financing for these deals. We will be working with the state, it'll be unlikely that we'll be allowed, they'll be willing to fund both at the same time, so we'll have to pick one versus the other. Our goal is to get zoning locked in place from both of them and then move forward with one of them and develop it, the drawings more. So, what would happen then is, there's an upcoming funding round that, applications will actually be due in February. Our goal and hope is that we'll be invited to make an application for that. For that funding round, the drawings need to be at about what they call 40% drawings. So, what the architects and Chelsea will do between now and, say, February, is they will advance the plans on one of the two buildings to that level. And it's at that level, it's at that process that all these little things that we're hearing now start to get worked out and fixed as we go along. The, as the, as the letter also said, one of the, another process with this whole zoning piece is that, at the end, when we come to apply for the building permit, there's another check of all the plans. And so, the building inspector will actually go through the plans to make sure we did everything we said we were gonna do in the zoning decision. And part of that review process is this memo that's here, and so, anything that needs to be addressed, or we said we would address, will get addressed at that time, and he would reject it if we don't. So, that's, you were asking one of your questions about how these things ultimately get addressed. At the end of the day, that's the final answer, and we'll make them, we'll change them between now and when we do the building permit.
Sure.
But your ultimate, final check to make sure everything gets addressed appropriately is, is at that stage.
Okay.
Thank you.
If that's helpful.
I'm all set. I'll see. No question.
Very good, thank you.
So, that satisfied the two Gray's reports, and I think we should move on to the Auburn Water District's letter, please?
Yes, we received the Auburn Water District letter, and we've been in contact with Ken Smith from the Water District. We've performed the hydrant flow tests that were listed in there, as he noted in there. I think it was an update at the end of item number two, that we need to do the flow test before the winter, which we've done, sent him the results this morning. We absolutely will comply with the, their standard regulations of the materials they would like to see on the site. The others were really standard practice of backflow preventers and making sure that we have all the proper equipment in there to comply with plumbing code.
Okay. Any questions regarding that?
No questions. Awesome.
No, okay, ladies?
That's it.
Just one quick question, I'm sure you probably didn't have time yet, 'cause you've just got this, but on the one from the water, it said that the fire department will be, should be contacted in regards to placement of hydrants. That's probably something you haven't done yet, I understand, but it...
Yes, we'll meet with the fire chief when we have them all laid out and make sure that they agree with our placement.
For both locations?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I think we have no further questions for the moment, but we'd like to open it up to the abutters, if we could, please. I see we have some abutters in the audience, would anyone like to speak? If you'd just go up and give us your name and address and talk about your concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Neil Chauvin from 4 Arrowhead Avenue. I'm an abutter, of course, and last meeting I raised three concerns primarily. The first of which was around the wall that is currently at the back of my property line, which, if you're on the fence line of the Mary D. facility, you would see that that's my property there down below, and the wall sort of is on that property line. So, it is a loose stone wall, so I did share some concerns about the integrity of that wall with any new construction and/or there being a rite of, a pathway there, if you will. So, this evening, Penrose did come out and take a look at that wall with me here, so I'm appreciative of that. We just reviewed it. What I was looking for was a little bit of reassurance that structurally that wall wouldn't be compromised at all with all the work that's going to be done. So, I would say that I raised that point this evening again, and I was reassured that they think things are, you know, pretty solid, they didn't see any issues. Did also point out to the side of my property line, more closer to Church Street, that the wall is buckled, okay? Severely buckled, so I did bring that to their attention as well. Where I am, the wall is straight, it doesn't look like it's buckling or anything, but that's now, who knows, right? So, we did talk through that. The second item is around the drainage, and we had brought that up in the last meeting, just wanting to make sure that the catch basins and things like that were looked at. There was nothing left sort of undone from the prior plans that would adversely affect water flow coming into my basement, you know, down the hill, down the slope. And I have some good reassurance from that meeting with Penrose this evening, that I think that, you know, in good faith, all of that will be taken care of, so I appreciate that. The last item would be around the privacy, specifically the driveway where you would enter, the horseshoe design where you exit to come around. That would be my property line there, where the traffic would flow out of the facility. So, there would be some headlights and whatnot at night. You know, with the school, you didn't really experience that, so that is certainly something new, as well as that whole sightline across the back of my property where I'd ask for consideration for a privacy fence or some shrubbery of some kind to assist. What I would reiterate here with the board is, because the stone wall is about six feet in height in my backyard, there's a chain link fence up there now, okay? And I'm just concerned about any traffic coming around the back there. If they don't stop, okay, because that has not been a rite of passage currently. So, that is a new plan that goes along the back property. I would just be concerned if there was nothing there at all, that there's nothing to prevent a possible elderly driver, somebody from driving right off into the yard. So, that is a concern, and I just wanna raise that. But then, there's also probably the more rationale piece of the lights, you know, the noise and things like that. So, the fence, the privacy fence, I would still like Penrose to consider some, some type of accommodation in their plans. I haven't seen that yet. I don't believe that they're at that phase of the design, so I just wanna advocate for that. It would make things so much better because of the fact that, again, six feet up now in my property is the stone wall and that's where their chain link fence starts. For me to put a fence up proactively, I have to start on my own property, which I'm six feet, now I'm at the wall level, and I would have to go up, you know, to get any sort of privacy another, say, 10 feet, and that's not something that's, you know, readily available at some expense that wouldn't be pretty exorbitant. So, I just ask for consideration on that, and I'll certainly look to Penrose to carry that consideration and any other guidance that you have along the way. So, those are my primary concerns, I appreciate you hearing me.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Anyone else? Sir, if you could just come up and introduce yourself, give us your name and address?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm RJ Scazza. I reside at 11 Church Street, directly across the street from Mary D. Stone School. At the last meeting, I had requested, put forth a proposal for a traffic analysis. I'm just wondering if that was done?
We just reviewed that, I think, prior to you coming in.
Okay.
But basically, I can certainly provide you with a copy of it.
Matt's gonna give them one.
It's roughly gonna be less than half of the daily trips from Mary D. Stone compared to what was the school. And then, at night, concerning the office, well, excuse me, concerning the office space, it'll roughly be about a third less. So, I think with Mary D. there and the amount of trips and all the parents dropping off and picking up, I think you're gonna see a substantial difference in the traffic flow, it'd be a lot less, at least is what they're reporting.
Okay, my concern was that, you know, and that was mentioned at the last meeting, is in comparison to school traffic, it would be far less. However, school traffic would be primarily during the drop-off and dismissal procedures for the school, which, let's just approximate, would be 8:30 to 9:00 in the morning, where you would have the buses and the parent drop off, and roughly 3:00 to 3:30 in the afternoon, when you have, would have the parent pick up and the buses pick up. My concern would be just general increase in traffic and I'm not sure what the exit and entry points are in the designs at the front of the building. So, I live directly across the street from the school, and if it's Boy Scouts, if it's church, whatever the event might be, people are parking in front of Mary D., parking on Church Street at the end of my driveway. If it's the pumpkin festival, there are cars that are lined all the way down Church Street. I can't back out of my driveway at times without fear of there being a car parked on the other side of the street. I also have a two-year-old daughter. It's just a concern for not, in comparison to what a school would draw for increased traffic. My concern is with now a facility that houses 56 residences and their visitors and whatnot, how much of the entrance and exit point will be at the front of the facility?
Okay, I can't personally answer that question, but maybe one of you could?
Sure. I'll pull up a plan here from the Stone School. Bear with me one moment. Well, it looks like the computer's gonna restart on me, but I think when your concern came up the last meeting, I think there may have been some misinterpretation as to where the, what the entrances to the building and the entrances for, or the parking for the vehicles are. So, with Church Street, there's an entrance, a vehicular entrance off of Church Street for the site, but the first parking spots are somewhat into the site and quite a bit away from Church Street. The, and there's also, there are no entrances to the building off of Church Street. The entrance to the building is in the middle of the site off of the park, parking lot that faces east and faces town hall. So, there aren't any building entrances or for people going in and out of the building on Church Street. The entrance is off the parking lot in the middle of the site. So, I think that should help alleviate some of your concerns as to the amount of cars parking on Church Street and also people coming and going on Church Street.
Caleb, can you...
Yeah, well, yeah, through the chair, if you go back up the lectern, please.
Just a quick one, I was just wondering if, I know there's only one means of either entrance or exit currently. Is, are you going to, in your design, have a, if you're facing Mary D. Stone School, are you gonna have a separate driveway, if you will, will, at the left-hand side for a means of entrance and exit?
So, vehicular traffic is one directional, so it would enter if you're facing, if you're on Church Street facing the original Mary D. Stone School, the vehicular entrance would be on your right, and cars would leave the site either up through into the town hall parking lot and out onto Central Street, or looping around the building and exiting onto Church Street. So, it's, there's only, there's just two curb cuts or two driveway lanes that are onto Church Street, but it is one directional, so there's one entrance and one exit.
Okay.
And we're back.
Caleb, and this is just a side question for myself. Concerning that traffic and the parking, as the gentleman mentioned, you know, on the weekends, I live in the neighborhood as well, I do see like the pumpkin festival and church gatherings and different things like that, where they're parked on both sides of the roads. I can see his concern about being able to get out. Could we require a no parking signs in front of Mary D. as part of the special permitting process?
I would have to defer that to Auburn PD or the DPW. I don't, I don't know if the selectmen have to approve the no parking.
Right.
I would defer to DPW.
Certainly request it anyway, I think, and then we could send it to further review.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Just wanted to make note of that. Yes, sir. That's okay.
And I don't wanna monopolize the stage here, I just had two more things and then I'll be done, and I appreciate you putting that forth, that would be much appreciated if, if there could be a possibility of a no parking, at least at the end of the driveway zone there, for me, and I have a tenant that lives next door. The other two things that I just wanted to mention were the playground, for one, and that was a big sticking point, if you will. Originally, when this was all proposed, is that there would be preservation, not only the front of the building, but of the playground and the play facility or the field facility for the, for the youth sports. So, if you could just speak to that. And then, the other thing, like, I know you said a new playground or renovated enhanced playground or what have you. And then, the other thing is the front of the building itself, will there, in your design, will there be apartments or units that are right in the front, so those windows that were...
those windows that were formerly the school classroom windows, will those be the windows of a unit, or will those be the windows of office space or hallway space, foyer space, if you will? I'm just curious for my privacy. I know privacy was mentioned from the side looking onto Arrowhead, but I will have potentially people with their windows right in front of where my living room and bedroom window will be. So those are the two concerns that I have, and that will be it.
If you can't address those at all? I know we touched on those in the last meeting about the playground improvements and where the, your property will, or the proposed property line will stop and what the town will retain.
Certainly, yeah. If you don't mind, I think I'll take the last question first and first question last. So the windows that face Church Street, essentially what were classrooms originally in Mary D. Stone School will be retained as units. So the, I think there's four groups of four windows on Church Street. Those will each, those will be units. The fronts of those will be divided up into living rooms or bedrooms, so it's not office space or circulation or corridor space. Those will be units. The playgrounds, in the case of Mary D. Stone, because of the footprint of the new addition, needs to be slightly relocated and reconfigured. It will be pushed back, and it's kind of an L shape now. It will be elongated, and we've got monies in the budget, project budget, that we've committed to in the Town RFP to improve those, that playground and bring the equipment up to safety standards, number one, and just improve the overall playground from a safety and aesthetic standpoint as well.
Okay. Thank you. Does that satisfy your question, sir?
It does, thank you. And then the last thing I'll ask, and maybe this is on behalf of the group as well, is will we continue to get an update on timeline, further meetings, when the date for construction is going to be, things like that, so we can plan accordingly? I know that it's a magnificent project, and there's going to be a lot of machinery, a lot of demolition. I know that at the last meeting I was at, you guys were concerned about an individual having a five-gallon drum of oil or fuel on the site. I mean, this is much more significant than that. So obviously, there are concerns about things like that.
Anytime there's a public hearing scheduled, as in a butter, you'd be notified.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was the timeline gone over before I came out? Sorry, I thought the meeting was started at 7:30.
That's one of the things I wanted to ask myself, is what the proposed timeline.
And that'll do it for my questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
So maybe you could just go over the proposed timeline. I know it's kind of hard to say with the permitting process and the applications, but...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's, I mean, with anything, there are certain things we can control in the process, and that's, you know, we try to move those along as quickly as we can. And then there's things we can't. So the big, the big thing that we can't control is the awarding of the financing, and those are done on an annual basis. And the long commizing tax credit is going to be the primary vehicle for the financing here. It's an extremely scarce resource. It's in extremely high demand. Most applications that go in don't get funded the first time around, and so you have to go in a second time and sometimes a third time, and they're on an annual basis. So our goal is, in particular, why we're doing the zoning now, is to get the zoning locked down so that we are in a place where we can't apply and sort of start that clock, right? And so you actually get a preference in future rounds if you've gone in and been rejected in previous rounds. So that's why we're pushing hard to get our zoning locked down so that we're in a place to turn to the state and say, "We're ready to go. We got our zoning in place. We're gonna make an application in February, and we'll see what we can do." There's, there's no specific deadline for when the state gets back on the awards. In the past, if, you know, the past is, it continues as it's been in the future, awards are often announced in July or August. So best-case scenario would be we'd go into the round in February, and we actually got an award this year, and that, so that would be in August. It would take us probably six to nine months, I'd say nine months from that to actually get to a closing, and that's the point where we'd start construction. So the very, so if you're doing the math, right, so we're 2018, so the earliest that we would actually put a shovel on the ground would be towards the end of 2019 for that. Most likely, it'll be the following year, because we'll probably have to go through two rounds of financing.
Okay.
And that would be on one transaction, then we would follow with the other. So... And construction then probably take about a year. So, you know, it's a ways off, but in terms of the specific question about, you know, when construction activities would take place, that's, you know, 2019 at the, at their list.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other butters care to speak?
Steve Miller, 9 Arrowhead. When we talked about the ball field at the last meeting, but it wasn't clear to me. Is the ball field going to be the same size as it is now?
So you're talking about the ball field at JB?
No, I'm sorry. Back here, Mary D.
Mary D., okay. Do you want to address that for me, please, sir?
Yeah, so one of the things that was really important to the town, and this was right out of the RFP, so was that the town retained the playground area. And so one of the things that Adam had mentioned is, is part of, because we want, we like the playground. We want the playground to be there. You've heard me talk about it the last one, that we see it as a benefit and amenity, even though it's senior. We see some real benefits there. So we actually, as part of our proposal, said, "Hey, we'd be willing to help invest in improving the playground." So we've committed $25,000 in our application to do that. And Mary D. Stone, in particular, given the tight constraints of it, we've actually worked with the town, and they've been very accommodating in giving us a slight easement onto the existing playground area to do some parking. It's not very much, and in fact, it, it wouldn't even impact the area where we're planning to make some improvements. We're planning to put a, like a walking, kind of a walking path. It's not really a walking path, but sort of a strip, but sort of between the building and the, and the play area, just to create kind of a separation there, not a real formal separation, but a spatial separation between the two. And so, given all that, that's a long way of saying, that at the end of the day, there won't be any loss of the, of the playground area to the town. What Adam had mentioned is that part of the playground area will be covered up by that, some of that easement parking there, but we're gonna redirect the playground actually onto the playground area. So we're just gonna reconfigure it. But at the end of the day, there won't be any loss of town-owned land to that.
Okay.
I just wanted to add further your butters' comment regarding the field, and what Mr. Adams was saying, is that you're looking at possibly an encroachment of about one line of cars for parking, but it's not gonna impact the size of the soccer field that's already in use now.
Okay. And the dumpsters, I take it, are not gonna be anywhere near, placed anywhere near the playground or the ball field, correct?
Yes, that's correct. I can pull up a plan here to show you. And I think, sir, your question was more specifically about the soccer field, more than the playground. And the soccer field is not, the extent of it are not, are not being diminished or, or were changed.
Is your property a for-profit company?
Penrose, I think.
What was the question? I was asking if you're a for-profit company.
Penrose is for-profit.
What you have on the property. Right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other butters? Again, sir, introduce yourself, give us your name and address.
Alan Johnson, 10 Arrowhead Ave. I guess one of my questions is, during snow removal, we have a busy winter, a lot of snow. Is the snow gonna pile up? Are they gonna put it on the field? Is it gonna be salt included? Could it be environmental hazard? That's one question. The next one is, once they dig up all this land, they start doing their construction, and they finish the project, it's done, people move in. Say a year later, Arrowhead 4, Arrowhead 8, 10, 12, what if we start getting water in our cellar? Who's gonna be responsible if it happens, and we go to the town? What happens? Are we protected? And I guess that's it.
Okay. So the one thing I can address is that there's a state law in Massachusetts that you cannot divert water from one property to another. So if, in fact, the project caused water displacement to go into your, any other of Butter's property, obviously, the town would step in and have to address that issue. So that's, that's been protected for quite some time. So that wouldn't be an issue. I think honestly, with projects that we've had in other sections of the town, we take advantage of that because we are the stewards of our aquifers. You're gonna find out that this building probably had no water management underneath it when it was built, and if anything, you're gonna have a substantial increase in water management now, when they take all the topsoil, they put all the catch basins in, they do all the mitigation projects. I think you're gonna find it's gonna be a lot better managed.
Yeah. Well, it helps them. Yeah.
And I'm sorry, your other question was? I apologize.
The snow removal.
Oh, the snow removal. If somebody wants to address the snow removal and the, and the use of chemicals, can we talk about that real quick?
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Well, where they're gonna put it? I mean, are they gonna bring a truck in and take it out? Are they gonna lay it there in the field or on the sides everywhere towards Arrowhead side, or they just gonna put big piles of snow?
Okay.
So we don't have a full snow management plan ready right now. We don't expect any different chemicals or, other than, you know, normal snow removal processes. I don't know if Penrose has a specific product they use for snow removal, but we'll certainly look to be sensitive to the site and find the best places we can for it. Usually, we end up losing our own parking spaces for snow storage, as every other site struggles with during the big storms. But that's something we'll have to work out during the further design process.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Oh, yes, please.
Before you move on, I just want to clarify a point, and I appreciate the explanation that you had provided with this particular butter having concerns about runoff water. I believe, and I absolutely agree with you, that from one property to the next, as you've described, but I believe that Penrose is going to be the owner of this property.
Correct.
So in that recourse, and I think the butter directly asked on a responsible property, if that were to take place, and I'm not an attorney, but the responsible party, if in fact that water was coming from a property that Penrose owned, they would be the responsible party, not the town, to sort that out. I don't think the town would be responsible to remediate that. I think that it would be on Penrose to take that responsibility.
And I agree. I appreciate the clarification. What I meant was that they would have a recourse of action if they needed to report the water management to the town. It wouldn't be the town's responsibility.
I fully channel that. I absolutely, and I have no intention of trying to correct you openly.
No, that's okay, but I appreciate it.
From the point of the butters and looking for a recourse at that time, I just wouldn't want him to have in his mind, "Well, this is the town to correct." He would go to the property owner to correct.
I just want to, I want to make it clear that I've talked to all the butters on Arrowhead from 4, 8, 10, and 12. They have no water in their cellar. And I've been here over 15 years, and other people have been here, five, and another person next to me been here 30 years, never had water in their cellar. So that's why I brought this up. You just, you disrupt the soil, you start doing these things. If you don't have the right catch basins to take this water away, it's gonna move downhill basically.
Well, again, what we do is when they propose their water management program, they will go to peer review anyway. It would go to like Graves Engineering or one of the others to make sure that it's a thorough peer review to their, their up-to-code, if not beyond code. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Just one more time around. Mr. Cussy, have any questions?
All set.
Mr. Maron, no question. Ms. Roach?
I do have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So I just have a question in regards to the process for the applications and for the financing part of it. When you go in February, best-case scenario, to ask for the funding, I think you might have covered it, but is that funding for both projects at the same time?
Unfortunately, you know, there's, again, because it's such a scarce resource, most likely, we're only gonna be able to apply for one of the projects, not two.
Okay.
So we'll, we're gonna pick one versus the other and move that forward. And the idea is once that gets financed, we'll come back with the other one. If I can move it faster, I will. It's absolutely in my interest and your interest. I mean, those buildings aren't gonna get any better, right, as they, as they progress. I want to get it done. You guys want to get it done. You've been waiting a long time. I mean, not that long, but I mean, the school's been closed for a couple of years now, and you'd like to see something done with them. So we'll push on that. I just want to be realistic, you know, be realistic. I manage people's expectations, is that it's unlikely that we'll be able to do both at the same time.
And the grant money that you apply for obviously does not cover the full cost of the project?
That's, that's right. Well, yes, it's interesting. The state has, so the primary vehicle is the long commizing tax credits, and those are actually, without getting too much of the weeds, but they're, I mean, it's actually equity. We actually, the state gives us a credit. We sell it to an investor, and the investor gets a tax deduction for it. So that usually counts for about 70, 70% of the cost, maybe 60, maybe a little bit lower. Then the state has a bunch of soft money programs that are just, that are loans that are at zero interest, that are essentially forgiven at the end of the time, as long as the affordability's maintained. And then we'll have some actual hard debt on the property. So, you know, even, even though it's, you know, reduced rents, it's low income, there will be some cash flow that will be generated, and we'll take, you know, 85% of that cash flow, that's the most we're allowed to take, and pledge it to a bank for a mortgage, you know, to a 115 debt service coverage ratio, and we'll get a private loan from a Citizens or a Bank of America or Wells Fargo or somebody like that. That's, that's the bulk of the stack. There's other monies that often can come in, sometimes federal home loan bank money and other things. We, we get pretty creative. We find pots of money that we need to, to make the deals work.
I guess that's my concern, just ensuring that if, you know, especially for neighbors, no one wants a project that's half-done. They don't really want it fully done, but they definitely don't want it half-done.
So, so we're on the hook to get, so when we close, you know, we, we sign the guarantee that says that this will be built for the amount that we sort of built, and if it's more, we have to cover that, too.
Right.
So, so we're gonna be very mindful of that, you know, if, if, you know, we're not gonna move forward on anything unless we're fully confident, because it's our nickel that we can get from the start to the finish. So, and then just to expand a little bit more on the finish, what is the finish? I mean, when it's leased up, one of the things that the town can, can sort of rest easy with at night in terms of how it's leased and how it's managed, is that when we lease these units to folks, the tax credit is provided the investor over a 10-year period of time, and they only get the credits if we maintain the fact that, you know, we're leasing to long-term folks. So we're on the hook for that as well. So we have to make sure that we're maintaining the property with the right occupants, and, and that we're maintaining the property in a way that's financially feasible, because they're expecting their return on that. So there's lots of eyes that are on it, and it's, it's not just a build and then we leave. We're, we're in it for at least 15 years, because it's a 15-year credit. So, yeah, and it's a 30-year affordability restriction. Usually, what we do at the end of those 15 years is we refinance them again.
Yeah. Okay. I'm good.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any further comment or discussion? Okay. I'd just like to ask Matt and Caleb, do you see any reason why we cannot bring this to a vote this evening?
Mr. Chairman, perhaps I can address that. Actually, that's why I came up to the point here.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Paul Habbity from Blatman-Babrowski. And Habbity, I think what we were looking to do tonight is actually just close the hearing.
Okay.
And what I'd be willing to do is prepare a decision for the board to review. You could then schedule a deliberative session during which you would go over the draft decision, make any changes that you feel are necessary, any additions, and then at that point, you could vote on, on the, each application and determine whether or not to approve. I will let you know that I am a consultant with Massachusetts Housing Partnership. I do the technical review program. I've represented dozens of boards throughout the state. I've got, you know, many, many decisions that I have issued that I can use as templates. So it'll have all of, you know, the sort of the important conditions that are standard for comprehensive permit development, and I can get that to you, add the particulars for these particular projects, and at which point, you know, you should be pretty well-covered. All of the issues that I have heard discussed tonight with regard to the peer review are the sort of things that can very easily be dealt with by imposing conditions referencing those comments. And the way that Chapter 40B works, and I'm sure you're aware, is the applicant comes in with preliminary site development plans. The board never gets a full set of plans prior to the closing of the hearing, but the draft decision will say that the applicant has to come back before the board with final design plans before building permits can be issued. So that would be the time that all of these, you know, peer review questions will be answered and shown on the plans. So I think that should cover any concerns that you may have.
It does. Thank you. And that's probably the better word, better choice of words than I, that I was using. So I apologize for that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so just so I'm clear, and with respect to this gentleman's expertise, is it being suggested that this, this gentleman...
expertise, is it being suggested that this, this gentleman write our decision? God, did you want to weigh into that?
To the chair.
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Benoit, Town Planner, just wanted to reiterate that this is not uncommon for the attorney to write the decision in 40Bs, especially as on the applicant's behalf. The town zoning board had done this in the past, I believe it was 2008, maybe 2009 for the Kateri Tekakwita Housing on Wyoming Drive. Or we're in, at that time, Attorney Paul O'Brien, who represented the applicant, actually drafted the decision for the town as well.
Right.
So that is a common.
Appreciate that.
And certainly.
With that background, would that decision then be taken, looked at by the town attorney?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, so how do you want to take a look at that? Because my understanding is that this gentleman is representing the applicant.
Right.
To the chair, if I may, the board would have the ability to review the decision before it took a vote as well.
Great. I'm sorry, if I didn't state that clearly enough, what I would be presenting to the board would be a draft decision in which the board would review, make any changes which it felt appropriate, make any additions that it felt appropriate. And then it would incorporate that, and it would be your decision. It's not that we're providing you a decision and saying, here, this is what you have to vote on. It's really just a way to help get the process started.
So I think for clarification purposes, too, is that 40B, as they, we've, I think all gathered and learned a little bit this evening, is that it's a unique application process. It's in some instances, kind of putting the cart before the horse a couple of times till we get it all worked out. So right now, we're giving them a preliminary approval of the proposal. If that is the case, then they come back with more solid plans, they can stop with their application processes, that type of thing. So and once all that takes place, they come back with their final plans, and then we can vet those and determine the best course of action from there. So it is a unique application process, something we're not always accustomed to. You know, usually we have everything right in front of us before we do this, so it's something we have to get used to. Does that help you or no?
It absolutely helps me. I'll, I'll hold any additional comments.
No, go right ahead, please.
I appreciate the explanation from the board. I, I think that this is, to say this is a unique scenario is an understatement. I think that I would be satisfied. I certainly respect Matt, that, that background on if this is, how this has been approached before. I don't think the board is, is used to decisions being written for us, but given the fact that it'll go through our town attorney, and then we'll have a chance to review it, the process is what it is, so I'll.
It is what it is. And we actually have had other attorneys submit the, the decisions for us as well in the past. I know it's not common, but it has happened. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Go right ahead, please.
Just to counsel, in regards to the process for when the zoning board should vote on waivers, I believe they should do that prior to closing.
It can be done either way. Really, the issue with the waivers is, you know, the board can do that discussion after the hearing has been closed. The difficulty is that if the applicant needs to present any new waivers at that time, they can't provide new information once the hearing is closed. So I mean, and I guess the, the question is, do you really see any potential for needing to request any additional waivers? So it's really, it's up to the board's discretion. The board has 40 days from the close of the hearing to actually render its decision and file it with the town clerk, and that can be extended by agreement of the applicant. And I'm sure we wouldn't have a problem with that if it got to the point that we were getting close to the end of that 40-day period as well.
I see it.
Anything present?
I don't know. Okay. So with that being said, and all the information gathered, I think that we are going to wait for the next set of information before we decide on waivers? And I'm just throwing that out there for discussion.
I would agree.
Good to me.
I would agree.
Okay. So would this be an appropriate time, all parties concerned here, to put in some of the conditions that we talked about that you could add into that draft decision? Okay. So if the board could entertain me for a moment, what I would suggest is that traffic study really has no impact in terms of permitting. I would like to propose that they abide by all the requirements of the Auburn Water District's letter dated October 31st, 2017. Also, through the two Graves Engineering peer review letters that we submitted, that were submitted to us for both Mary D. and Julia Bancroft, and I'd like to have those special conditions inserted into the draft before we review it. I would also like to ask if whoever it might be, the building commissioner or the town clerk, submit a letter to the police department or the highway department, whatever necessary authority it is to determine whether or not it would be appropriate to include no parking zones in front of Mary D. for the benefit of the Butters and the neighbors?
Mr. Chairman, would you rather that read that the applicant would pursue that with the police, with the police department or the D.W.?
Okay. If I may, to the chair, I believe that the entrance and the exit are going to limit. State law doesn't allow you to have parking areas adjacent to an entrance or an exit within so many feet, so I think that's going to pretty much take care of it, so.
I'd just like to try to provide those neighbors with some relief. I know, again, on the weekends, even, you know, yard sales, whatever, it gets pretty busy up here. So if I can somehow provide those neighbors with some relief on that, I would like to do that. Also, one of the Butters mentioned the privacy screen. I think that would be something that we should propose to look into. And also, I do agree with the Butter there concerning with the, the older drivers, that a possibility of a safety barrier on that particular side of the building that would, you know, prevent a possible accident of somebody going into one of their backyards. I think that's reasonable. Is there anything else I would like to add?
Nope, that covers it.
Okay. Ms. Chacolo?
I'm fine with what you said.
Mr. Marion? How you doing all day?
All set.
This place?
All set.
Okay, Ms. Roach?
I'm good.
So for the correct rules of order, I believe we keep the hearing open for now. You come back with a draft review, is that correct?
Again, Mr. Chairman, you can either close the hearing tonight or you can keep it open. It doesn't prevent us from providing you a draft and having you review it within the same timeline.
Okay. I would prefer myself to leave the hearing open for further public comment, and in the event any of the Butters have any other concerns or something that comes up, they can register that with the town clerk. I think that's going to give them the opportunity to continue to be actively involved in the project and know that the, you know, we have an interest in full disclosure as well. So that's what I would propose. But again, you seem like you've done this quite a few times in the past. It feels like you dotted your i's and crossed your t's. It's just one of these unique application processes that we have not done that often, so it's a learning process for us as well. So I appreciate your patience. I also appreciate you, you know, providing all of this really thorough background and information for us as well. So, and I also want to thank the Butters for being patient and keeping an open mind. So thank you very much. So do I have a, a motion to keep the hearing open until, I think our next meeting is?
Continue?
Would have to continue.
Continue it.
Yeah, I, I will get to that. Hang on one second, sorry.
November 16th.
November 16th, that's what I was looking for, yes. So the next meeting, scheduled meeting is November 16th. Would that provide you with enough time?
Yes. We'll make sure.
I'll answer for him. Yes, that'll be enough time for him.
We want to make sure, because we could, we could schedule another meeting if we need to, but if that's going to be.
No, we'll, we'll make sure to have it to you by then.
Okay. So.
Mr. Chairman, I would just note that, given the fact that we are keeping the hearing open, and we will not have entered into the deliberative process yet, nothing prevents you from closing the hearing and commencing deliberations on the same night. So that if come November 16th, you've got a draft decision that you feel comfortable with, with a couple of maybe minor changes, you can actually commence your deliberations that night. You don't have to schedule a new night of deliberations and, you know, take additional time.
Right, I appreciate that, thank you. But, so, yeah, I think, so we keep you on the docket for November 16th. We could be able to review the draft decision that night.
And vote on it.
And then vote on it, and I think it should be okay. Agreed?
Agreed. Mr. Chairman, so what we're going to be receiving is, is their proposed decision?
Correct.
They're going to be writing it. So, so what I would want is that we would have an opportunity to send that to our town attorney?
Mm-hmm.
And so I don't think that that action would take place that night unless we can get it beforehand.
So what do you think for a timeline in terms of your decision tomorrow?
So we'll have it to you a week before the.
So if that's possible, then if we can get a copy of it to our town attorney as well?
Yep.
So if he has any comments, we should have an in writing that evening, and that way we'll be prepared to either move forward one way or the other with this project, whatever it may be.
We'll, we'll do that. We'll get, we'll, we'll shoot to get it out a week before to Matt, Caleb, everybody and the attorney.
As long as we can get it in our packages, and then we can get it to the town attorney.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
May I have the board's permission to discuss some of the standard conditions that you typically have on some regular projects?
Absolutely.
With, with counsel for inclusion into the draft?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, so do I have a motion to continue to the November 16th meeting? Will remain, the hearing will remain open to the public at that time? Do I have a, a motion?
Motion to keep this hearing open and continue until November 16.
16. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay.